Welcome to On the Ballot with Ballopedia, where we take a closer look at the top political stories of the day. Ballopedia connects people to politics by providing neutral, nonpartisan, and reliable information on our government, how it works, and where it's headed. I'm Doug Kronizel, filling in for our host, Victoria Rose. Thanks for being with us. Today, we're joined by Dwayne Yancey, the editor of Cardinal News, an independent and nonpartisan news site that serves southwest and south side Virginia. With over 40 years of experience as a journalist, Dwayne has spent his career in his home state covering politics. His 1988 book, When Hell Froze Over, details the rise of Doug Wilder, who went on to become the first black elected governor in the country. And in 1989, he was part of the team of reporters who covered a coal miner's strike in the state, which was finalist for that year's Pulitzer Prize. So, Dwayne, thank you so much for coming on the show.
Thanks. You make me sound old.
Well, you know, we're going, we're pulling together all the storied history there. You know, it's not old. It's not old. It's a tome. There you go.
Well, let me tell you about the time I covered Teddy Roosevelt's campaign. That was.
Yeah, exactly. Great, great story. A great story. It was the best of times. So, Dwayne, you've been a journalist for over 40 years, and I'm sure you could entertain us for hours with stories from your career, like interviewing Teddy Roosevelt. I'm interested, though, in what first made you want to cover politics in your home state and keep at it for so long?
Well, I guess as a kid, I was a nerd. I was like the fourth grader reading the newspaper and have always been fascinated by politics. I originally wanted to be a sports writer. I was never very good at sports, but loved sports. Thought, man, sports writing would be a great gig. But yeah, and sports and politics are a lot alike. You know, there are winners and losers. So here I am.
Yeah, and I feel like there are a lot of analogies that span both lines of reporting. You know, there's a lot of sports terminology that can make its way into political reporting. But can you tell us a little bit more about Cardinal News in particular and the sorts of reporting that your outlet does?
Sure. We're a nonprofit online news site. We started in 2021. Many of us involved with the launch of Cardinal were previously with the Roanoke Times, which is the big newspaper in the western part of Virginia. I tell people, if you're not familiar with Virginia, we would be like upstate New York. All the glamour and excitement is somewhere else. And people who've never even been to upstate New York understand that, oh, okay. You know.
But you guys have a lot of trees, right?
We have a lot of trees, yeah. In Virginia, most of the population in power is on the eastern side of the state, what we call the urban crescent from the Washington suburbs, down to the state capital of Richmond, gone down to Norfolk and Virginia Beach. We're out in the other part of the state that is often overlooked. Roanoke is the big city out here, the buffalo of western Virginia, if you will. And like many places around the country, we've seen newspapers decline. I was at the Roanoke Times for 39 years. Many of us involved in the launch of Cardinal were with the Roanoke Times. And as we saw things decline, part of our solution was, you know, we left and formed our own news site to cover the big stories in this part of the state. Part of the impetus for that was when the Roanoke Times, after it had some layoffs, gave up covering state politics, was going to pick up all of its political stories from the sister paper in Richmond, which are fine stories, but again, they're not covering legislators out here or our issues. And that paper had a long, proud tradition of covering politics long before I was born, which is longer ago than I wish it were sometimes. And so, you know, when we launched, we launched with a staff of two reporters. One of those was a political reporter in the state capitals. Like, okay, if the papers aren't going to cover this, we will. In just two years, we've grown from a staff of two reporters to a staff of seven, soon to be eight. Our focus originally was on the politics, economy, and culture of this part of the state. That's still sort of the core of our coverage. We also have an education reporter, a technology reporter.
Any sports reporters yet?
We do not have any sports reporters. We do cover some sports on a freelance basis, but we're not up for game coverage.
Okay.
These are more featurey sort of things. There were two small high schools that merged. And yeah, we have a freelance sports writer did a story about them trying to put together a football team, what happened to rival schools or team names.
A few weeks ago, we were talking to Alexander Russo from The Grade and about education reporting in general. And we were talking about kind of local stories and covering local stories, but covering them in a way that, you know, they can kind of be engaging to a wider audience beyond just kind of, you know, I'm sure the story about the two high schools coming together and that process and what they went through is something that's engaging to people who don't just live in those school districts. You know, people around the area are interested in what that is. And it's a helpful story to tell.
Yeah, that's the goal, that people outside Albigany County would care about that story.
Well, I mean, something that won't come as a big surprise to regular listeners of the show. The story of yours that caught our attention, caught my attention, was a recent article about how the school board seats in Virginia this year, how a majority of them are uncontested, meaning the people on the ballot pretty much automatically win. I was especially excited because here at Ballopedia, Virginia is one of the 10 states where we are covering every school board election this year. So this kind of reporting is really helpful at peeling those layers back. What can you tell us about those uncontested races? When we say, you know, most of the seats up for election, what does that actually mean numbers-wise?
Well, first, let me go back in history to sort of explain this. I won't go back as far as Teddy Roosevelt, though I may go close. Virginia has never been a state that has liked a lot of democracy. In the 1940s, there was a famous book written about southern politics by Harvard political scientist V. O. Key. And he had profiles of each southern state and its politics. And he talked about Virginia and said, by contrast, Mississippi is a hotbed of democracy. The point being that at the time, the electorate was kept very small, and the powers that be did not want much political participation. So that is, you know, times have changed, but there is still sort of that flavor to Virginia politics. And all that leads up to Virginia was the last state in the country to start electing school boards. When I was growing up, school boards were basically appointed by the courts. Again, this was sort of a holdover from the Berg machine, which controlled Virginia in segregationist times.
Sure, you kind of consolidate who has the say to kind of the people who you're appointing.
Yeah, exactly. You know, the powers that be appointed the judges, and yeah, they can make sure that the right people got appointed to the school board. Arlington, this is way far afield from your question, but just sort of by way of setting the stage. In the 1950s, Arlington in the Washington suburbs had an elected school board. And it dared do something that was quite offensive to the powers that be. It decided to integrate its schools. And you know, that just couldn't happen in Virginia in the 1950s. So the powers that elect the school board was taken away from Arlington.
One of the things that, when you mentioned the courts in particular, I think Virginia still remains, I don't know if they're the only state that does this, but I know that they do do this, with recall elections. If you get a recall going in Virginia, in most states, when we hear recall elections, you get the signatures to recall an official from office. They go on the ballot. You have a vote. Should this person be removed from office? Should they stay in office? In Virginia, it similarly is the courts. Like, if you successfully initiate a recall, it becomes a court case. It doesn't go to the ballot. It goes to the courts. And then the courts decide whether or not that official should be recalled. So I didn't know that that's probably like a very logical holdover from the courts having appointment powers in particular in the past.
Yeah, there are only a few localities in Virginia that have the power to actually have a recall election. For the most part, it's exactly the way you described. And you know, from time to time, you got people who get upset with some local official for one thing or another, and they decide, you know, we're going to launch a recall petition because they think it's going to result in an election. No. First of all, I've known very few who even get to the courts. But if they get to the courts, the standard basically is, has the elected official violated the law or failed to carry out their duties? Well, no. I mean, you know, you just didn't like the policies they enacted. And yeah, they all get dismissed.
I think there was one in Loudoun County. I think they had a recall. Or maybe it was one of those instances where it was successful, but then the person targeted in the recall ended up resigning. So it never actually ended up going to court.
Yeah, there's a recall petition now against the city council member in one of the places we cover. And I had a column pointing out, sorry, folks. You know, you can get all the signatures you want. The guy has not broken the law or failed to show up for, you know, 100 meetings or something like that. He's just doing things you don't like.
And a lot of those recalls statistically don't actually end up, you know, people don't get the signatures. They don't file them on time, things like that. You know, we hear about like a lot of recall efforts, but then the number that actually end up getting to that position where decisions are being made is relatively small. But beyond the recalls or removing people from office, if I could go back to the, just people who don't have to run for office in particular, because no one's running against them, that you mentioned it being a recent thing to be electing school boards in Virginia. When you say that, how recent? Like, was it after the 50s, like 60s, 70s, or?
It was in the 90s.
Oh, it was the 90s.
It wasn't until the 1990s that Virginia authorized elected school boards. And when they did so, that did not mean there were automatically school board elections in every locality, because the localities then had to decide whether to have an elected school board, which meant they had to hold a.
Yeah, to have like a vote or something like that.
Yeah, they had to have petition drive and so forth. Most of the localities in Virginia now have elected school boards. I think out of 140 roughly localities, there may be a dozen that don't. But, you know, they didn't all happen at once. I mean, even within the past 10 years, we still have local referendums on should such and such a county elect a school board. Invariably, when it's on the ballot, people vote yes, but it does take some.
If it makes it to the ballot in the first place, yeah.
So to go back to answer your original question, Virginia does not have a long history of electing school boards. Yeah, in some localities, it's, you know, less than 10 years. And in many of those localities, historically, particularly rural localities, you know, these were uncontested races. There are still some school board districts in Virginia that have never had contested school board election.
Like, never since, like, they decided, yes, we would like to be able to elect school boards, and then no, they haven't had more than one person run, or, you know.
Correct.
Wow. How many? Do you know off the top of your head?
I can't think of it up. The state board of elections site is a little hazy, you know. While the 90s might be recent, you know, the web is not all that recent. But there are, you know, a handful.
More than I would expect, just by virtue of it being bigger than zero. So.
So to answer the question through this year, this year, we have 376 school board seats available across the state. Only 166 of those have multi-candidate races, meaning all the others.
It's just like one person or?
Are either unopposed or nobody's on the ballot or they're all.
Like zero, like nobody. So what's that? That calculates out to like a little over, yeah, a little over 50 or closer to 60%, right?
Yeah, 56% of the school board candidates this year are unopposed.
That's very interesting. That lines up with something that we've been seeing in other states as well this year, where we've done kind of full school board coverage in Oklahoma and South Dakota, which are, you know, obviously very rural states. It was around 80% of those school board elections were uncontested or canceled. And then in Wisconsin, kind of, you know, a little bit of a purplish battleground state, similar to Virginia, it was also like right under 60%, right around. It was like 58%. So, yeah, this really fits into like a large trend on that part. What about it in Virginia stood out to you? Like, in terms of like how everything operates and kind of just general? I mean, odd year elections in Virginia are different than odd year elections in all these other states, in that Virginia, you have your state legislature is holding elections every odd year. So how does that all kind of feed into this, in your opinion?
Yeah, in Virginia terms, this is a very big year for us, because the entire state legislature is on the ballot. And with that party control with the General Assembly, the, right out of the House is controlled by Republicans, the Senate by Democrats, both are closely contested. So, yeah, this is a big deal in Virginia. And then you also have lots and lots of other local offices, sheriffs, clerks of court, boards of supervisors, yeah, the whole gamut of things, and then the school board races. When you look at, one thing that stands out is sort of the geographical split. Rural areas tend to have uncontested races. The contested school board races are generally in the more urban or suburban parts of the state. Yeah, there are exceptions both ways. But generally speaking, yeah, in rural Virginia, there just aren't many school board races.
Not as many people around to run for a school board.
Yeah, I think, yeah, a couple of reasons. Yeah, one, there are just not as many people. And, you know, people feel closer to their school board member in lots of ways. I mean, physically, and also just more likely to know that person. So, you know, that person is probably not a stranger to them. And, you know, sometimes you can, you know, still have very contested races with the people who know one another, but it's, you know, because the temperature is a lot lower. Yeah, and I'm looking here at the map that we ran, and, you know, there are a whole bunch of rural localities this year where there are no school board seats that are contested.
And so, one of the things that you pointed out in your article, like an additional kind of theory or hypothesis, was a more of like, you know, ideological homogeneity, sort of mindset. Like, if you kind of are in a rural area, everyone kind of tends to be on the same page a little bit more in more rural areas than where you've got like a whole influx of people constantly coming in and kind of the more metro areas. Do you think that that feeds into this at all? That people are just like, I'm fine with what our school board's already doing because they're doing what I want, like, they haven't done anything that I don't like. So, great, like, let them keep doing what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, the political reality is, you know, in Virginia, most rural areas are very conservative. And by very conservative, I mean, you know, we've got some that vote, yeah, 80% or more Republican. Yeah, a lot of the school board contests we're seeing in other parts of the state, the more suburban parts of the state are coming from, you know, sort of the so-called parental rights movement, which is basically a conservative movement. Yeah, a lot of these rural areas, you know, there are no liberals on the school board to throw off. So.
Oh, sure, yes. Who are you running against in that setting?
So, you know, you don't really see that phenomenon.
Like, there's nothing in the alternative or in the inverse of the way of like a liberal movement to win over rural school boards, or that kind of track doesn't exist the sort of same way that we've heard stories in the alternative. You know, I mentioned this conversation we had with Alexander Russo. And in that, we also talked about storylines that we often hear about school boards, the hot button topics, the heated debates and things like that, and how they don't always track more broadly on the ground. I think your reporting shows that, in Virginia at least, that is not really true for a bulk of these elections that are taking place clearly. You know, uncontested races, usually not that energetic of affairs, like, there's no decision to make. You know, how do you think that narrative of school boards being cultural battlegrounds is reflected in Virginia or being perceived by Virginians? Because like you mentioned, there are some districts in Virginia where things are relatively energetic. But does it feel like in those more rural areas where, or in just any area in general where uncontested races are happening? Like, what's sort of like the tenor? You mentioned like low temperature, but how does that kind of play out politically in your experience?
In much of rural Virginia, that just simply hasn't permeated here at all. Yeah, I can cite some exceptions where it has, but again, those are exceptions. You know, the really big school board contests that are very much sort of, you know, cultural war battles are happening in, you know, the more suburban parts of the state, particularly Loudoun County, in the Washington suburbs, where that has been sort of ground zero for.
Yeah, Loudoun County being, that was mentioned in my local school board election in South Dakota was, people were talking about Loudoun County, Virginia. So, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, there's a whole lot going on in Loudoun County.
But you mentioned that, like, you could list exceptions, but that kind of tends to feel like how, you know, a lot of this coverage can be from time to time, is that, you know, it's very easy to pick out those exceptions and be like, we're going to talk about Loudoun County and kind of extrapolate to be like, this is happening everywhere, but obviously, it's not happening everywhere.
Yeah, and it's not, you know, where it's happening. I mean, it's sort of like coverage of the state legislature. And Virginia is probably not that much different from other places. Most of the bills in the state legislature are not partisan bills. You know, they're very technical things, and they're either passed on a bipartisan basis or killed on a bipartisan basis. It's a relative handful that are very partisan, and that's where all the fireworks are.
But then when you look at kind of coverage of the legislative session, people kind of tend to pick those fire points, like you're mentioning. They're like, this is how we're going to remember this legislative session, is like this bill that got a lot of attention, and then this bill that got a lot of attention, and then this one. But in reality, there are hundreds of just kind of regular, we have to keep things funded and, you know, change this like weird regulation that doesn't really apply anymore.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, in Virginia, as is true probably with every state legislature around the country, you know, abortion is a big topic of controversy. And, you know, we in the media cover that because there are a lot of fireworks and, you know, people arguing back and forth. But, you know, the proposal to add a substance abuse recovery program at Catawba Hospital, you know, has bipartisan support and, you know.
You don't hear about that story as often. With school boards in Virginia, you know, we've kind of talked about the elections for them, how things are set up this year. What power do school boards have in Virginia? Because that's one thing that I think is not always clear, is that a school board in California versus a school board in Missouri versus a school board in Maine, they all have very different roles and responsibilities that don't always line up, or different powers of what they can and can't do. What power do the boards in Virginia have? And does that play into any sort of like lack of competition? You know, or anything along those lines?
That's a very good question, and probably so, because the big thing is Virginia school boards do not have the power to levy taxes.
Oh, really? So they can't adjust property taxes or anything like that?
No, that was a condition of having elected school boards, was they would not have that power.
They're just like, but if we're going to let you all vote on this, like, you're not touching the taxes.
No, that power resides with the local governing body, the state council or a county board of supervisors. And it creates weird situations, because in many rural localities, the single biggest expense of the county government is the school system. Now, if you really want to influence how much money schools have, and even sometimes how it's spent, you know, you really ought to run for that county board of supervisors. They're the ones, you know, setting the tax rate and, you know, setting the budget. Then, you know, in some places, you know, they will just give along some to the school board, and other places, you know, they will specify, no, this much for this, this much for that. So, you know, sometimes you may have people run for the school board thinking they're going to have a lot of power. And, you know, they find out, gosh, you know, what they're dealing with are, you know, maintenance problems, you know, in the cafeteria. You know, because they're not really setting curriculum. You know, if you want to influence the curriculum one way or another, you better run for governor, because then you can appoint the state board of education, and that's where the curriculum standards come from. So if you can affect curriculum and you can affect, you know, the overall amount of spending.
It kind of gets at that kind of perception of these offices as very, very thankless. Like, you know, you're just going in and making sure the lights are turned on and everything is like running smoothly. And, you know, you got a bus schedule going or something like that.
So it's not what some people think it is.
Well, I mean, you've covered a broad range of topics lately, but I'd love it if we could continue the focus on Virginia's education landscape. There's two stories of yours additionally that kind of caught my eye lately. The first is about Virginia's teacher shortage. It's been a big and growing issue across the country. And you cited a handful of takeaways from a recent state report about this topic. What were some of the most important takeaways? Or what does that look like in Virginia in particular? Or any solutions that were offered up in the report?
Sure. Yeah, this was a report commissioned by the state legislature. It found that teacher shortages in Virginia had basically quadrupled since the pandemic.
Wow.
And that, you know, probably half the teachers who were leaving, you know, were leaving because they were unhappy with the profession in some ways. Either, you know, they were fed up with parents, they were fed up with the school board, they were fed up with both, all of that. It also pointed out that for some time now, Virginia has been running a deficit of more people leaving the profession than entering the profession. Yeah, some of that is demographic, as you have, you know, a wave of baby boomers retiring and, you know, not enough people replacing them in the pipeline. And the pandemic has exacerbated that. It also found some very troubling geographic and cultural gaps. In rural areas, the shortages are actually pretty small.
Oh, really? That, I was just about to ask a question like to the alternative to that, like, oh, I mean, yeah, these rural areas.
Yeah, that is not necessarily what you expect. Now, you know, rural areas often have trouble finding specific types of teachers. You know, math and science are the two that get mentioned most. But overall, you know, on a percentage basis, rural areas have very low teacher shortages. The highest numbers are in non-rural areas. And the biggest ones, there is a very strong and unfortunate correlation between localities with big black populations had the highest teacher shortage. Now, I did not speculate on why that was. Many of the places with the highest teacher shortages, you know, have very large minority populations.
So it didn't kind of get into why? It didn't get into the why, but did it get into sort of like what the next steps might be? Or what a state might do in this situation to kind of? Because, I mean, a quadruple increase is a pretty sizable increase, one that probably isn't sustainable in the long term. What solutions were offered?
Well, one thing that always happens when the General Assembly commissions a study, and then their study commission has a very good and nonpartisan reputation.
Is this like a legislative research sort of?
Yeah, it's a joint legislative audit review commission, JLR. No one wants a JLR commission coming after them, because they are very thorough. But the legislature also often ignores a lot of their recommendations, because a lot involves spending money. The two things stood out. One, Virginia in recent years has pushed a program to encourage career switchers to go into teaching. This report cast a very dim light on that and said that about half the school system said their career switchers were unprepared to go into teaching. And only about 3% said, no, these people are great. So for those who think, you know, we just need more people switching careers, the report did not really smile on that. It did, however, it basically said the state needed to spend more money on teacher recruitment. And contrasted Virginia with North Carolina, which spends about eight times as much money on teacher recruitment. Now, in the context of Virginia, Virginia sees North Carolina as its great rival for economic development and lots of other things. So to be contrasted with, you know, North Carolina.
You don't like that. That doesn't sit well. Nobody likes that.
You know, nobody likes that. Democrat, Republican, nobody. But that also didn't mean they're going to do what North Carolina does. That was a very painful comparison. If they picked out, you know, well, South Dakota does it this way, and nobody would care. But, well, North Carolina is spending eight times as much money, you know, like.
It would be similar to if somebody were to contrast what South Dakota is doing to what's North Dakota is doing. Like, South Dakotans wouldn't like that very much.
So I don't know what will come out of this.
It's on the table, like, we're aware of it, the report exists. It's out there, and now it's kind of, next steps are TBD.
I mean, I hate to make it political, but, you know, ultimately, if you're expecting, you know, a state government to do something, yeah, it's going to be political. You know, Republicans have been very big on pushing the career switching program. And this report said, yeah, that's not really the answer. Republicans, yeah, by definition, don't like to spend much money. This report said, you need to spend, you know, as much money as North Carolina does.
So then it kind of gets into who's willing to kind of bite the bullet on that front, or?
Yeah, it was interesting. While some teachers have been leaving the profession because they can get paid more elsewhere, it did not really say the solution is to raise teacher salaries. You know, that would certainly help, but that was not.
Oh, so it really is just like, put more money into telling people elsewhere, like, come be a teacher in Virginia. Like, we're, like, either students who are in Virginia already, people who live in Virginia already, get them to become teachers, outreach to other states saying, you should move to Virginia and be a teacher here. That's kind of the focus that the report settled on, was like, that's what you need to be putting your money toward. That's interesting, yeah. Well, I mean, one of the things that also stood out to me was beyond the kind of public education level, K-12, you also had an article that highlighted growing enrollment rates in community colleges across the state. Why is that such a big deal in Virginia? And have there been any policies or initiatives that have led to that increase in attendance that you're aware of?
Yes, yes, we could talk a long time about that. Community college enrollment in Virginia and, you know, lots of other places have been declining for about a decade or so now. Part of that is demographic, just simply fewer people in that age pool. It has become an issue in Virginia, again, maybe elsewhere, but particularly in Virginia, you know, the governors, you know, we have a governor very focused on economic development. He sees a labor shortage, you know, he sees employers that, yeah, have jobs and they can't fill them. Okay, we need more people trained for those jobs. But then, yeah, community colleges are one way to train those folks, but enrollment is going down. enrollment is going down. So the previous chancellor of the community college system retired. Well, we, we gotta have a new chancellor, but when the search was going on, the governor got very involved in that process, more involved in some white like, but this is Governor Glenn Youngkin, a Republican. He was very focused on wanting to increase community college enrollment, particularly in short-term programs, you know, sort of non-academic programs with job training.
Like a licensure job training, sort of get you certified, sort of.
Exactly. Eventually they, they found a new chancellor. He came in in April and not surprisingly, that has been his big focus is, you know, we need more, I'm going to say adults as opposed to, you know, people coming out of high school, you know, going to community college for two years.
Yeah. Well, I mean, maybe those career switchers, like the people who are kind of like looking for a shift in what they're doing, kind of getting that training before making that switch.
And enrollment is now, now up. There, there are probably a lot of reasons for that. I mean, yeah, certainly the new chancellor, if I were him, I would claim credit for that. Yes, I would. There, there are some programs that have been put into place and actually were put into place before this governor's took office by his Democratic predecessor, Ralph Northam, called the Fast Forward Program. It's not really a, it's basically a free tuition program. Virginia does not have free tuition for community colleges, but if in certain programs, certain high demand fields, they can cobble together different funds and it gets, yeah, effectively free. That has been where part of the big growth in enrollment has come.
Like those programs in particular, the ones where kind of the barrier to entry is like, you kind of take away the financial barrier to entry sort of piece of it.
And, and the interesting thing in the, the latest figures that, that came out, Virginia's 23 community colleges, 20 of them saw enrollment increases. And one of the ones that didn't stay even. So there are only two that.
Actually went down.
Yeah. And all of the rural community colleges saw increases, which is fascinating and, you know, for lots of reasons. Cause you know, some of these places are losing population. So you would expect.
Yeah. Like the sheer number of people is, is smaller. So yeah, fewer people around to, to be going.
The other thing that has happened in many of these rural localities, the localities themselves have put together free tuition programs.
Oh, so, so they've, they've kind of taken, like you were talking about, we can cobble things together for these certain programs, but in these, are the localities the one who govern the community college? Or how, how's that system? Is that like a, you said there's a chancellor? Is there like a board of regents or?
Each, each community college has its own president who reports to the chancellor. There's a local governing body for each community college, but they don't hire their own president. That's, that's hired from above, but they, the, the local board advises and so forth.
But then these other localities, like, like the city governments and the county governments, like they're the ones who kind of like get together and put together these like funding programs for their community college in particular?
Yes. Yes. Um, so some of these have been privately funded and others are a mix of private and local government funding. So, you know, here you have really, you know, the least affluent localities in the state helping fund scholarships at the local community college, you know, which raises a philosophical question, you know, is that their role or should that be the state's role? But, you know, the reality is the state's not doing it. So the.
So someone, yeah.
These are, and, you know, their justification is, you know, most community college students are going to stay, yeah, they're in the community and they're going to stay in the community. And you know, the, the challenge, and I'm sure this is not unique to Virginia, many of the people who would benefit most from community college cannot afford to go to community college. Yeah. Sort of the stereotypical cliched example often cited to me is, you know, the, the single mom, she's 30, you know, she's working at a fast food joint. She wants to go to, you know, community college. She could go to a six-week program and get a credential to get a better job, but she can't afford to quit the one she's got now because, yeah, she's got to pay rent, has to pay childcare. Yeah. So free tuition doesn't help her if she can't.
So you're also losing the income that you have right now in order to go down that path.
So there's a lot of emphasis on what are called wraparound services. Yeah. We have many community colleges now with food pantries. Yeah. And, and I know one that gives out vouchers for hot meals. You know, they, they can help students with their rent and, you know, some are setting up childcare programs.
So kind of again, like the more of those walls that you kind of break down, the more accessible this becomes. And so it kind of doesn't leave you scratching, like you're not scratching your head. You're like, oh, we've made it easier to do this thing and more people are, are doing it now. So that's fascinating. Yeah.
Yeah. Politically, it's very interesting because, yeah, again, you know, Republicans don't like to spend money. On the other hand, you know, all these rural areas are represented by Republicans and sometimes practicality wins out. Okay. If this is what we need to do to get more nurses.
Then this is what we're gonna, we can't, we can't not have nurses. Yeah. That's, that's, that's super interesting. And, and that's the kind of, that's the kind of reporting that you're all trying to, because I mean, like if nobody was reporting on what's happening in, in your neck of the woods, like you wouldn't really hear about a lot of this at all. Like that, that wouldn't be captured in any sort of storyline for people to like go look at and see and, and know like, oh, that's what's going on over in this community. That's interesting. I had no idea. Now I do.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we basically, ours is a part of the state that has historically felt overlooked for reasons of the population. And, you know, not to brag, but we feel we put together, you know, a megaphone. And, you know, we're, we are certainly not a chamber of commerce publication by any means. We tell the good with the bad, the bad with the good. But ours is a part of the state that is easy to stereotype. And, you know, we like to feel we're, you know, breaking down some of those stereotypes.
Crafting your, your own narrative in, in that respect.
Yeah. I mean, I'll cite the community of Danville. Uh, it used to be a textile community. Around 2000, the textile industry collapsed. Everybody in Virginia knows that story. Oh, poor Danville, their industries went away. Well, that was 23 years ago. That was a very dramatic collapse. Yeah. We covered, you know, we in the media covered dramatic things. What has been not so dramatic has been how Danville has slowly rebuilt itself and reinvented itself as an advanced manufacturing community. And, you know, there's been no one around to sort of tell that story.
And kind of, I don't know, like the, the chap, the next chapter, you know, chapters of Danville, you had the collapse here, and then there's this next chapter of the, the rebuild that if no one's looking at, if no one's reporting about it, that it's not like it doesn't exist. It is happening, but it affects people to kind of have that, that sort of timeline in their mind. And you can't really get that timeline unless it's laid out in front of you to, to kind of see in one place.
Yeah. I mean, what, what were the best compliments I got was I was in the state capital last year and someone came up to me and said, wow, you've really changed my impression of Danville. Well, again, we're not a change of commerce publication, but it's true. The Danville of today is not the Danville that they remember, you know.
In 2000, 2001.
Yeah. And, yeah, same, same thing for our coal counties. Yeah. We, we call them coal counties, even though coal is almost gone in many places. And even the coal friendly state legislators in that region, you know, are pushing renewables because, you know, they're thinking, okay, if coal's on the way out, energy is our thing. We want to be an energy capital. If we were an energy capital with coal, what's being energy capital with, you know, other forms of energy. And these are not tree hugging, you know, Republicans by any means, but they're very practical. I mean, you know, understand the economy and saying, oh, you've got, you know, Republicans there out pushing renewable energy.
Sure. I mean, there, there's, there's so much that we could talk about when it comes to Virginia state politics, the state legislative elections. I know we touched on it a little bit, so I regret not digging into that a little bit. But you've, you've written recently about the kind of outstanding questions that will help decide how this year's elections are going to play out in Virginia. We always like to kind of leave our listeners with a look ahead, sort of what's on the horizon. So what are your two or three of your biggest questions with what's going on in Virginia? You know, we mentioned the partisan composition of the general assembly is kind of on the line. If Republicans win both chambers, Virginia will have a Republican trifecta. If Democrats retain the Senate or win both of them, it'll remain a divided government. Lots, lots at stake. What are the two or the three biggest questions coming up in this upcoming election?
Well, one thing it's got a question, just sort of the lay of the land. We have new legislative districts this year. And for the first time, these are drawn not by the majority party in the state legislature, but by the state Supreme Court, which appointed two special masters. So we had nonpartisan redistricting, which has confounded lots of things. And we have a good pressing number of retirements this year. For the first time, we had districts drawn without regard for where legislators live.
Yeah. And I will add, the renumbering happened very, very goofily. I feel like, like district number three used to be over here and now it's on this other side of the state, which, I mean, you know, it's just a number, but I got my spreadsheet set up in a certain way and then the.
Oh, oh, yeah. And you have legislators arguing, you know, what had been district one is now district something else. And, you know, the legislature, you know, but I wanted to be district one. You know, this is where, you know.
It's on, it's on all my signs already, you know, like.
Yeah. But in terms of the factors, I mean, you know, yeah, certainly the Dobbs decision is a very energizing thing for Democrats. Yeah. We will see what kind of influence that has. On the other side, for Republicans, parental rights, you really sort of have two parallel campaigns going on. There probably aren't that many truly undecided voters. This is really a base election, you know, with each party trying to energize this base. So you have Democrats trying to energize this base with the Dobbs decision. You have Republicans trying to energize this base on parental rights.
Yeah. Nobody's reaching out to the other side to be like, hey, you should really be on my side with this issue. Like they're, they're aware that everyone's probably made up their minds on this front already.
One interesting thing is that the Republican governor is really pushing early voting and has embraced that in a way I'm not sure any Republican in the country has. And part, part of the reason is when, when Youngkin was elected in 2021, Democrats had a normal turnout, Republicans had a near presidential turnout.
Okay. Yeah. So the, the base energizing.
Yes.
Kind of lift there.
Yes. So Youngkin would like to replicate that, you know, on behalf of Republicans and sees early voting as a way to do that, that you have more opportunities over 45 days than, than one day. And he's had some very clever wordsmithing. His phrase is secure your vote. So.
Okay. So you got the election security, but also an expanded early, early voting period.
Yeah. So you've got a lot of Republicans who have been on the, you know, the election security issue, you know, now out pushing early voting with secure your vote. That, you know, that, that's like A plus wordsmithing there.
Yeah, there you go.
So one question is how successful will Youngkin be in encouraging early voting? So far, well, Virginia doesn't register voters by party. So you can't really tell who is.
Who's turning out and who's voted how.
But in some districts where Republicans are unopposed, so there's no reason really for anybody to vote there, you see very high early voting turnout, which tells me those are Republicans who are excited because there's no Democrat on the ballot.
Yeah. Yeah. Which, which typically kind of the, the common mindset is that if an election is uncontested up at the top of the ballot, it kind of will trickle down and people won't feel like there's a need to go vote because, you know, there's no decision to make in the first place. But you're seeing in these counties where that is the case. I mean, the highest election that you're going to have on your ballot is going to be your state legislative because there's none, like the governor isn't up for election this year. None of those. It's, it's state legislative is up at the top and they're still seeing that, that increased turnout. That's interesting. Yeah.
I mean, the numbers change every day, but, you know, Appenax County is a place where, you know, the Republican House delegate was unopposed and the Republican Senate delegate was unopposed. So there's really, unless you were really excited about some local race there, there really wasn't a reason to vote other than, you know, just you felt you ought to do your civic duty. But they just had very high early voting turnout, which tells me, well, those are probably Republicans responding to the governor's message. Those looks are kind of wasted because Republicans are going to win there anyway. You know, but is that replicating itself in other districts? Well, we don't know.
But we'll find out. We'll find out this, this November, most definitely. Well, well, Dwayne, thank you so much for your time today and for your expertise. It was great speaking with you. Great conversation. And for our listeners, you can learn more about Dwayne's work at the link in our show notes. We will be back next week with another episode. Make sure you subscribe to On the Ballot, wherever you listen to podcasts. I'm Doug Cronizel and thank you very much for listening.